You would have to buy so much right away to do that work.
Correct.
It's a concern.
I don't think they were even willing to reduce the speed on that, right?
That's also correct.
I think you're correct.
I think you're right. I think they did push back on that.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Um, you know, the chapel, the eastbound chapel one is a concern, you know. I live near that neighborhood and I can, I see the backup there at that light, so, you have that as your three C. And that, that's, if you can have that turn lane, now they did the, they did the westbound chapel turn lane going north on the 50. If they can now mirror that and do that eastbound chapel with a south turn lane, you would probably get that traffic moving, especially since that's a major corridor in the evening. People leaving downtown Easton going back home, uh, to Caroline County, um, so.
And I, I know when we met, when we did the annual consolidated transportation meeting or whatever, I asked about the towns and they said that they meet with the towns during the, um, MML. Yes. But do they, does the town, does each town submit something like this as well?
I believe they do.
Okay. It would, I think it'd be really beneficial to see what the town of Easton has on here. Cause I, you know, cause, cause they're making changes to the bypath or parkway. I feel like we need to coordinate it a little bit better than what we're doing somehow. And I don't know how to, how to do that. I mean, they're certainly independent, can do what they want, but I think it'd be beneficial for us to see what their, their plan is.
Correct.
Not only that, I, I think you're right. I just think maybe you trying to coordinate with the state, is there any hope for us to do anything? When it comes to, you know, from north to south, where our problems are? And if, if it is, is there, is there, you know, is there, you know, you're talking about millions of dollars in the budget for them. So is, is there, is there something that we can do? Take a look at this list and is it something they can actually pick out and say, hey, I can't do one, but I can do number four? So can they give us some hope on, is it something in the next couple of years on this list that we can do?
So when are we sending, because the CTP isn't till October, November?
Right.
So this is five months from now. So yeah, it's good to discuss it tonight, but I don't know that we should, need to make a final decision on this. I know you sent it up probably prior to our CTP.
Yeah, we do send it up prior, but I think to your point, we can come back to the county council with some ideas and maybe we can look at, you know, check the town's priorities and have you, have that information for you as well. I would appreciate that. I think that'd be good.
Right.
That'd be great.
And then, and then we'll also see what, you know, what the priority list in Dorchester County is and maybe, you know, see what, you know, what we come up with.
Got you.
So council, we will have to get this back to the state. I think it's due back in, in May.
It is, I think May, but I think it's something.
So we, if we can get something back to council by the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um, so is there a, um, all right, so we're not approving anything. We're not, you're coming back?
Yeah, we're coming.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Okay, next, um, Madam Secretary, we've got introduction on administrative resolution. Could you read that into the record, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. May I ask a quick question, Madam Secretary? We were, um, we are here, um, and we all respect your decision to wait until after the planning commission's meeting next week.
Yes, ma'am.
To move forward with these resolutions, and I understand you threw them out of them. Our neighborhood, as you can see, is here to have testified about Kirkham Station Resolution 223.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a possibility that we could continue with that? What is best for you and most effective and productive possible?
Well, you're, you're welcome, well, we go to public here and you're welcome to come up in front of us and talk.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, but we just really wanted to let you know there's not going to be any vote on it tonight because the pla, yes, ma'am, because the planning commission hasn't seen it yet. So, you know, I, we'd love to hear some of your concerns. No problem.
You just want me to read the title, correct?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yep.
Administrative Resolution of the County Council of Talbot County. The County Council pursuant to the authority of Bill Number 1494 enacted by the County Council on November 9th, 2021, the public local law authorizing the execution and delivery of a master lease agreement, equipment schedule number 001 and related instruments between Talbot County, Maryland as less E and Sig- Signature Public Funding Corp. as less O, for the purchase of equipment for the county's repurposing center located at 28128 St. Michael's Road, Easton, Maryland.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas and Ms. Nagel, do you, Mr. Thomas, you want to start us off on anything or?
I'll turn to Ms. Nagel.
Okay.
That this is the essential component of the leasing of the equipment.
Okay. No, no problem. Joy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so as, um, Mr.
Lean in. Come up just a little bit lower.
There you go.
As Mr. Thomas just mentioned, the equipment is related to the repurposing facility.
Okay.
We've been able to secure a lease, um, for five years to fund the purchase of the equipment.
That's great.
And, um, we need this resolution to be able to, to make that purchase.
Sure.
Through the lease.
So Warren, did you want to say anything or are you good? Uh, it's been a long journey, but I really appreciate everybody's support and we're going to make it work. Okay, that, that sounds great. Okay, at, um, at this time, um. I'm sorry.
Just need to show a hand for introduction.
Yeah, okay. Madam Secretary, you want to show a hands?
Yes.
Okay.
And then do you need to ask Mr. Lusher?
Yeah, Mr. Lusher.
I, I will join in the sponsorship of the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Callahan, since this is an administrative resolution and this eligible for vote this evening, would you be open to a vote, to move us to vote tonight?
Sure.
Uh, I ask that we move the administrative resolution to vote this evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now let's, um, we're going to move into the public hearing.
So you want to?
Yep, you want to go ahead, Ms. Price, you want?
The same thing I did at the beginning.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and some of you may have heard, some may not have heard, since we have not heard from our planning commission yet, we were going to be continuing this public hearing. And sometimes what the, uh, as Mr. Callahan said, we're welcome to hear from you, but sometimes based on what the planning commission recommendation is or is not, may determine what you may or may not want to say in your testimony. So obviously we're going to go forward with the public hearings, but if you're more comfortable waiting until the next meeting, um, that's great as well.
Would we be able to testify again or is that not appropriate?
No, there wouldn't be two.
Yeah.
The, the same person come back up again?
Sure.
Yes?
Yeah.
We'll be leaving the record open.
I'll be leaving it open, yeah.
Testimony at the next meeting, so if somebody could conceivably just wait to testify at the next meeting, they would have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, all right.
No, we think if you're changing your testimony, yes, but you wouldn't come back up and give the exact same testimony twice.
Okay, are we ready, Madam Secretary?
I'm ready.
Okay, we want to start off with, um, uh, 315. Resolution 315.
Resolution Number 315, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $8.6 million for the purpose of replacing the town of Easton's Gleeb Water Treatment Plant with upgraded technology.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, at this time, um, like we said, we're open to a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come up here and, um, talk about 315 at this time? Anybody want to come up?
Mr. Callahan, uh, just want, are you still doing three and five?
315?
I said 315.
No, I'm saying three minutes for your individual five minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, um, nobody's, nobody, we're going to go ahead and, uh, nobody's coming up to talk about that, so we'll go ahead and keep that open. Madam Secretary, would you like to go ahead and, um, do 316, please?
Resolution Number 316, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $800,000 for forced main pressure sensors and vacuum sensors for the Region 1, Unionville, Tunis Mills and Copperville, Region 2, Royal Oak, Newcombe and Bellevue, and Region 2, Martingham Sewer Service Area.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, so would anybody like to come up and speak about 316? Welcome to come up. 316. Okay, so we'll move on. We'll keep that one open. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and move to 317?
Resolution Number 317, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purchase of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $360,000 for a new emergency generator for the Region 2, Martingham Sewer Service Area and Martingham Water System.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, this is, um, 317, if anybody would like to come up and speak about 317, be glad to hear from you. If not, we're going to move on to 318, Madam Secretary, and we're going to keep that open.
Resolution Number 318, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purch- purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $2.190 million to eliminate septic systems in the villages of Barneck and Fairbank by extending sewer service from the Region 5 Tillman Waste Water System.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, so that is Resolution 318. If anybody has anything to say, welcome to come up and we'll hear you. If not, we'll leave that open for the next meeting and we'll go to, uh, 319, Madam Secretary, if you don't mind reading.
Resolution Number 319, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $43,688,300 for the Region 5 Tillman Waste Water System Enhanced Nutrient Removal E and R Upgrades and eliminating septic systems in and around the villages of Sherwood, Whitman, McDaniel and Claiborne by extending sewer from the Region 5 Tillman Waste Water System.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, so Resolution 319, if anybody would love to come up here and talk about, um, 319, you're welcome to. If not, we'll go ahead, keep the record open and you can talk, um, next couple of weeks. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you do 320, please?
Resolution Number 320, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to add or modify the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $800,000 for individual grinder pumps in the Region 1, Unionville, Tunis Mills, Copperville Sewer Service Area.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would anybody like to come up and talk about Resolution 320? Resolution 320, welcome to come up. If not, we'll go ahead and keep that open for you. Um, Madam Secretary, could you do 321 now?
Resolution Number 321, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Projects for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 for the purpose of adding a new capital project in the amount of $1.5 million for sewer collection system improvements for the Region 5 Tillman Sanitary District.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would anybody like to come up and talk about 321? 321, Resolution 321, okay. We'll hold that open and we'll go to 322.
Resolution Number 322, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located on Unionville Road, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 24 as Parcel 129 from Unprogrammed to S1 Immediate Priority Status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So we're, Resolution 322. Anybody would like to speak on that? Okay, I'll hold that open on 322. Madam Secretary, could you go to 323?
Resolution Number 323, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purchase, purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located on St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route 33, Easton, Maryland, and shown on Tax Map 33 as Parcels 38 and 105 from Unprogrammed to S1 Immediate Priority Status.
Okay, 323. I think we have a few people who would like to speak on that. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Good evening all, and, wait, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
Before we start, if I may ask a question, I have been asked to speak.
Could you give your name and?
Of course. Sorry. I'm Susan Dupont, 6870 Travelers Rest Circle. I'm here to speak on, uh, Resolution 323 Kirkham Station, and I have lived 41 of my 60-plus years in Travelers Rest.
Okay.
And the question I have for you to hopefully not start the clock is that I've been asked to speak for the 55 neighbors.
Sure.
That signed the, uh, opposing letter.
Right.
Does that mean that I am able to?
You get five minutes.
Get five minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Will then the people that are here to speak get the usual three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the, and it's still, so long as we report something different, if we come in two weeks, which of course we will.
Right, sure.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? Corey, did I make sense? Mr. Pack, excuse me.
That's okay. That's okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just running the clock.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry. Okay. First, again, Resolution 323.
Yeah.
Kirkham Station. There is no existing use or public health hazard on these properties. The business there closed in 2004, shortly after being purchased, and the final demolitions and cleanup occurred in 2007. Two, Resolution 175 prohibits giving sewer service to Kirkham. It states, "The property must have a single-family residence in existence or a commercial use in operation and a failing septic at the date of adoption, which was October 26th, 2010." Mr. Pack introduced Resolution 175 and it was unanimously enacted. Interestingly, a letter connected with that 2007 application says that the septic system was located on the railroad right of way, and an email in 2005 from Kristin Dayton to one of the owners of the LLC, and Anne Morse and a few others stated that the septic system was not on the property. Welcome to the eastern shore. Kirkham properties are mapped Tier 4, not planned for sewer. There were considerable and thoughtful discussions about these tiers, particularly with MDE and the planning commission, with clear direction from the MDE that this tier should not be changed. This was approved by the county and the state in 2016, although it was part of the 2012 septic bill statewide. Number four, Kirkham Station's 2000 application for public sewer unanimously denied by the Public Works Advisory Board and the Planning Commission was tabled by the council and Resolution 144 withdrawn in August of 2007 before Resolution 175 and the tier law even existed. Seventy-five percent of the EDU's equivalent dwelling units, which I had to learn, available on this line has been either used or reserved. Is it in the public interest to use this aging, corroding, narrow pipe and the Royal Oak Station not yet repaired for anything other than existing dwellings with failing septics? This is the primary purpose, purpose of any line down St. Michael's Road. Prevent the leaking of raw sewage into the rivers. Keep in mind that the raw sewage is processed in St. Michael's. Have you ever experienced trying to keep your head dry with a capsizing log canoe on a day that health alarms had been sent out on the Miles River? Another aspect of public safety and health is traffic. The 2016 comprehensive plan language includes, "The county shall prohibit commercial development along county and state roadways. State and county roadway capacity should be conserved by limiting future access points." Route 33 has the second highest traffic flow in the county, second to Route 50 that you all were just discussing. Adding another access to this road will heighten the concerns already particularly present for those who live in Travelers Rest. We have all ages of drivers and young families to protect. This application is the third bite of the apple by this owner. 2007, 2016, in hopes of renting the lot to a food truck, et cetera, and today. We believe that enough is enough now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Did I make under five?
You did.
Thank you.
Good job. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Charles DiMato.
What, excuse me, could you, yeah, there you go.
Hi.
There you go.
I'm Charles DiMato, I'm also a resident, although far, far more recent, uh, only since 2015 of Travelers Rest Circle. I have serious concerns about the safety of that intersection. There has been at least one fatal accident there since I've lived here and I've witnessed several others. I'm concerned that there's no specific, uh, plan that's been articulated for what will be built there. And, uh, I support what Mrs. Dupont says about the sewage problems that we have here. And I believe that you should do our utmost to preserve, as I stated in my letter, to preserve the, the rural nature of this area and rural charm of it. And, uh, hope that you'll take all of these things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. President and, and members of the council. I agree with all the.
Could you, could you say who you are, are?
I'm sorry, I'm Howard Snyder. I live in Travelers Rest Circle.
Okay.
And, uh, I've been a citizen of Talbot County for 21 years.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with everything that Susan Dupont just said. I particularly am interested in emphasizing, that I hope that this body will follow the law of Resolution 175 and deny this application because it does not qualify. The other thing that I want to emphasize is protecting the public safety. Uh, since I'm, uh, moved into Travelers Rest 14 years ago, it has become increasingly difficult for me to get out onto Route 33 to go either left to St. Michael's or right to Easton. And that tells me that traffic is increasing even more than when the study was done in 2005. Also, I, I, I have a, a question for the council about the, the nature of what this applicant wants to put on that property. We have heard no, no specifics whatsoever other than in 2016, uh, he was applying, uh, to, uh, place a food truck there. There's still a sign on the property that says, "This is where the food truck will be located." But that's all we know. And, uh, we think that as, as a neighborhood that butts right up against that property, we should have a lot more information so we can determine, um, how, how we can approach his application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hello.
Hello, hey there, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Good.
I'm Catherine Jones, I live at 7100 Travelers Rest Circle, and I also would like to echo what Susan Dupont had to say about this particular resolution. There is no real justification for extending sewer and water to this parcel. A business did operate on that parcel without sewer and water for any number of years before they were sold and the business was torn down in 2004. During the time that I've lived in Travelers Rest, that particular property had a business on it. It was extremely dangerous to try to make a left-hand turn coming from Easton and trying to make a left into Travelers Rest Circle because there is no way that traffic that's trying to pull into that business is not going to be coming up right behind you, trying to make a left-hand turn into the business, and there's always several, um, cars going in every different direction trying to access that particular property. It's an extremely busy road, St. Michael's Road. I don't know how often you all travel on that road, but it is constantly busy. There is almost no brake in the traffic when you're trying to make a left-hand turn or right-hand turn. People are riding on your bumper the entire time that you are trying to drive. It is very dangerous road. In addition to that, we've now got bicyclists on either side. So if you are trying to go down to Travelers Rest Road and you have to stop suddenly, you've got nowhere to go except for in the vehicle in front of you and the one behind you is going to pile into you also. So most importantly, I want you to think about that road and what adding any kind of additional development to that road is going to mean in terms of the safety of the people who are traveling on the St. Michael's Road. Been before you before to say that that is one road in and one road out. That road floods when we have heavy rains. You can't go anywhere. If there's an accident, you're going nowhere. And so I have said to you before, I pled with you because I have watched development all over this state take place with no adequate transportation. You know, the, the roads in and the roads out, and you think, how did we end up with these terrible traffic jams? Because no one thought ahead. And this road is one road in, one road out, and is not an appropriate place for any additional developments, especially not at that particular intersection. It's already very dangerous. So I ask you to please think about what that means to the thousands of people who are traveling on that road every single day, and almost all of them are Talbot County residents. It's not like Route 50, there's not people going to the beach. And it's a very different road from any other in this county. So I'm pleading with you to please think about that when you're talking about extending water and sewer to anything else
Thomas, Thomas.
Along the St. Michael's Road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Michael Hofstadler, I'm the owner of the Kirkham Station site. And, uh, with all due respect to the concerns of the residents, regarding their question as to what I'm proposing there, uh, the proposed structure to be constructed on the property would attempt to recreate the look of the historic Kirkham Station train depot that was previously on the site prior to the gas station and attempt to recreate the welcoming atmosphere of the former Three Sisters Cafe. I've spoken to many people who enjoy that atmosphere and love going there for morning meetings. Consistent with the approvals by planning and zoning, uh, September 2607 and the Health Department, December 3008, the footprint of the condition building, excluding any porches, would be relatively small, uh, not exceeding the equivalent of 64 feet by 62 and a half feet. The structure would be aesthetically pleasing and historically looking, as was always there to be, a benefit to the neighbors, residents and cyclists and tourists. Uh, I'd like to also remind people that I've removed, uh, over 1,500 tons of contamin- oil, gasoline contaminated soil from that site during my ownership of the property. And I was, uh, I received an order to demolish the house on the site. This gas station had to be removed in connection with the removal of the contaminated soil. And I've basically been placed in a. And I've basically been placed in a building moratorium since September 2607, when the planning and zoning said that I could recreate the structures that were on there, apparently nonconforming both as to the structures and to the SDA that was on the site. And then it wasn't until over a year later, on December 30, 2008, that I received approval to put an SDA on the site that would allow for a 4,000-square-foot building, which is what the 64 by 62 and a half feet works out to be. So essentially, I could never build because, according to the planning and zoning, I had to start the building within a year. But I didn't receive approval to build until, to put the SDA on the site until over a year later. So I've been prohibited from building the whole time. And also during, regarding Resolution 175, if you compare that to the 1993 resolution, it took away certain rights by adding those additional conditions which weren't there previously. And I wasn't invited to that hearing, but it took away my rights without due process by adding a condition that at the time of the connection, you had to have a failing site. But at the time, prior to that resolution being introduced or even considered, I had a resolution requesting connection in the system. But apparently that was turned down by Public Works and Advisory Board because of the fact that the Health Department was going to issue that December 3008 letter to me. So I would love to work with the residents to see what they want to put there. I was thinking of putting a bike rental there and trying to create a foundation to create a Rails to Trail all the way from St. Michael's to Easton. And thus, get some of the traffic safety that everyone's concerned about off of St. Michael's Road and onto a trail. And I think that's one of the things that we don't spend enough on infrastructure, is the safety of our cyclists and our, which, they really have no business cycling on St. Michael's Road because of what many of the residents have suggested here. I live on Rigby Lot Road, which is right off of 329, which is only one intersection down from Traveler's Rest Road. And it's not that difficult to get in and out. The traffic is not as bad as indicated. But I have the right right now to put food trucks on the site. But out of respect for the neighbors, I've delayed that. And I've had a number of people reach out to me about putting food trucks on the site. I want to work with everybody, but I think my rights have been taken away. And all I'm asking is what I was given the right to do back in 2007 and 2008.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Resolution 175, when it was enacted, was to address an issue dealing with the failing septic system on a commercial property at the Pincushion. Are you telling me that you had a permit for an SDA prior to 2010?
Yes. Well, I had a letter from the Health Department saying I could put an SDA on site. In fact, in the email that I sent to all of you dated March 16, after your initial meeting where you considered this resolution, I attached that letter.
You did? Okay. March 16th was that email?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'll look at it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like to come up and talk about Resolution? Okay. All right, so Madam Secretary, we'll go to Resolution 324.
Resolution number 324, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 26491 Royal Oak Road, Maryland Route 329, Royal Oak, Maryland, and shown on Tax Map 41 as Parcel 156, and certain real property located on Royal Oak Road, Maryland Route 329, Royal Oak, Maryland, and shown on Tax Map 41 as Parcel 233, Lot 1, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would anybody like to come up and talk about Resolution 324? Okay, hearing none. I'll keep 324 open. And could you go to 325?
Resolution number 325, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 26383 Royal Oak Road, Maryland Route 329, Easton, Maryland, and shown on Tax Map 41 as Parcel 214, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay. Would anybody like to come up and talk about 325, Resolution 325? Okay, hearing none. I'll keep that open for the next meeting. Madam Secretary, could you do 326?
Resolution number 326, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to authorize Talbot County, Maryland's acquisition of the wastewater treatment plant serving the Preserve at Y Mills, with the wastewater treatment plant being located at Rustling Oaks Drive, Y Mills, Maryland, 21679, described as Tax Map 01 Parcel 98.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Resolution 326. Does anybody like to come up and talk about 326? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and keep that open. Okay, now let's do 327, Resolution 327.
Resolution number 327, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purposes of providing that startup wastewater treatment for Phase 1, Section 1 of the Lakeside Project and its treated effluent shall at least meet enhanced nutrient removal standards and further providing that connection to the existing Trap wastewater system is conditioned in part upon the existing system not having any outstanding Maryland Department of the Environment Enforcement actions consent orders or violations.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary, 327. Does anybody like to come up? Okay, come on up, Ryan. You're welcome.
President Callahan, members of the council, Ryan Showalter appearing on behalf of Trapp East Holdings Business Trust today. I'm here to oppose Resolution 327. I'll make a couple of brief points. The first is that 327 was not first sent to the Town Council and forwarded by the Town Council to the Department of Public Works. The amendment procedures of the County Water and Sewer Plan require that for any amendments within incorporated municipalities, an amendment starts at the Town Council, is forwarded by the Town Council to the Department of Public Works. So I believe this resolution is procedurally flawed because it doesn't comply with the procedures for amendment. Second, we oppose this resolution because this is a discriminatory resolution. It impacts one single project in a sovereign municipality that has capacity to serve this project. The project Lakeside, which is the target of this resolution, has capacity allocated to it by a contractual agreement executed in January of 2021. It's consistent with the county's Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan as amended by Resolution 281. The improvements to serve Lakeside, to connect Lakeside to the town's wastewater treatment plant, were designed, were reviewed by the town's engineer, were reviewed and permitted by MDE, and have been constructed and are in the ground pursuant to the state-issued permit. 120 lots that are to be served by the capacity allocated by that agreement have been subdivided, are platted, certified on that plat, is being consistent with the Water and Sewer Plan and available for service by the town system. And I state that this is discriminatory. I'll note the resolutions you introduced earlier tonight, 318, 319, 321. Those are commendable as a county taxpayer. I thank you for doing that. I applaud that. I urge you to adopt those and to move forward with the Region 5 plant. But I just want to highlight a significant inconsistency that I think illustrates some of the challenges that the public discourse about Lakeside has really encountered. I understand there are folks in this community who don't want to see Lakeside developed. I think the town has been vilified in its mischaracterizations about its treatment plant. If you look at the Region 5 treatment plant and you look at the Trap treatment plant side by side, the Region 5 treatment plant, which the county owns, operates, controls, and can set policy for today, and you compare the period from January of 2019 through December of 2021, the Tillman plant, which the county controls, has been in violation seven of the past 12 quarters. The Trap plant had violations in two of the past 12 quarters. The flows going to both of those plants are roughly comparable in terms of volume. But one notable distinction is that the discharge permit for the Tillman plant is far more permissive. In other words, it is less stringent than Trap's permit. The Trap plant has limits on BOD, total suspended solids, total ammonia as nitrogen, and total phosphorus as P. And has been discussed significantly. There were a period of a couple of months last spring when the Trap plant had an operational error and there were exceedances for ammonia. Otherwise, the Trap plant has been in compliance with its more stringent permit every quarter for the last three years and for years before that. The Tillman plant only has limits for BOD and TSS. The limits for BOD that the Tillman plant has are three times higher than Trap's limits in the summer. TSS limits are comparable. The Tillman plant has had violations of BOD in the summer, three of those seven quarters. So three of the seven quarters where the Tillman plant was in violation, it was in violation of a limit that's three times higher than Trap's. And the Tillman plant doesn't even have a nitrogen or ammonia limit, which is the issue that everybody's concerned about for Trap. So I challenge you, how can it be equitable for the county to impose essentially a moratorium on one project in one town that has a plant that's operating, you know, three times better than the county's plant, but you haven't imposed a moratorium on connections in Tillman? And I'm not suggesting you do that. I think you should upgrade your plant. I think people in Tillman should have the ability to use the capacity that's there in accordance with the permit. And I think it should be upgraded DNR. But I don't think the county can sit here and say, "We're going to allow connections in Tillman, and we're going to allow connections of other homes in Trap, other properties in Trap. We're going to single out a single project and not permit connections to that." And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir, come on up. Good, how are you doing?
I'm all right.
Good.
So I'm Brian Schmidt. I'm on the Trapp Town Council. I'm on the Trapp Planning Commission. Though I'm speaking tonight necessarily on their behalf. I do have a few things to say that I believe go over my five-minute quota. I would hope that I could have some leeway with that, if you would. It's pretty well-prepared, so I'm not going to try and say things off the cuff or sort of ramble on.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just so I know, are you speaking on behalf of the council or on behalf of yourself?
On behalf of myself.
Then it would be three minutes, unless you're speaking on behalf of the council or the Planning Commission.
Okay, so instead of three, I still have a few things that will be longer than three minutes. I would hope that you would give me the leeway to speak. Because even though I'm not necessarily representing the council, it is a council member's point of view here that is being presented. So I wanted to say thank you for having me. There seems to be a certain contingency of people on this council and in this county that have the idea that Trap is cowboy-ing around, that we are running our wastewater treatment plant with no regard to public or environmental safety, and that development is running amok in our town. These are the same people who have never attended a meeting in Trap and have no idea who our council president has been for the past five years, or have no idea that this development was vested to Nick Rocks in 2003, 19 years ago, and expect Trap to reneg on that contract. So really, I want to start by telling you who my family and I are. I grew up in Trap. We own a local catering business in Trap. We are card-carrying members of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, the Sierra Club, the Arbor Day Foundation. We recycle cases of bottles and cardboard after every event we do. We compost food scraps from our kitchen, and what doesn't get composted goes to the local pigs. We tore down sheds on our property to plant a quarter-acre pollinator meadow. We have 40 solar panels on the roof of our shed. We have six rain barrels to water the gardens. My wife Kathy is a master gardener. My oldest daughter is an environmental scientist at Aberdeen Proving Ground. I'm the assistant scoutmaster of the Boy Scout Troop 532, and both my boys are Eagle Scouts. This is me. I am one of the people running the town of Trap. I'd like to ask a question. How many of you have actually been on Trap Creek in the past couple of years and seen the wonders that are there? I would like to share a couple of my personal observations. This past fall, I met with one of your planning commissioners at their home on Trap Creek. It was late afternoon and the sun was setting. Our discussion was on, of course, Trap's wastewater treatment plant, and what was going on with it. And as the discussion was going on, I was delightfully distracted, gazing across the creek, watching several fish jumping out of the water, looking for their dinner. And next, I watched ducks swim across the dock to their roosting spots for the evening. In 2020, a year we all remember, it was not very busy as all events were canceled. I did a lot of fishing. Trap Landing was my home port, and I was relearning the fishing spots from my youth. I was astounded at how much sea grass was growing in Trap Creek. Sawmill Cove was so covered in sea grass that I could not fish at all as every time I reeled in the hooks, it took several minutes to get the grass off. But that year, my family and I caught an abundance of perch, rockfish, catfish, trout, and let's not talk about Big Mama, the puppy drum my wife hooked just off a belvart that got away. I will share one more story of this troubled creek. This was from 2018. There were a large number of watermen keeping their boats at the landing that year. All of them were baiting the crab lines around the landing. And after receiving a tip from my friend that catfish were in, I took the boat and headed across the creek from the docks. It was there that I hooked the biggest catfish of my life. The point in these stories is that the personal observations of actually being on this creek, and not just by me, but other county residents as well, is the creek is alive and well. Fishing and crabbing still exist on Trap Creek. No one is saying that the findings that have been reported are wrong or that better can't be done. It can be and is being done. Trap initiated that by asking the council to create Resolution 281. But for you or anyone to say that this creek is irreparably damaged is wrong. The phosphorus from Trap's wastewater treatment plant is already voluntarily being treated to ENR standards. The pathogens that are found in any influent at a wastewater treatment plant are being killed, whether we are an ENR or a biolact plant. So two-thirds of an ENR plant are already being managed. We just have to upgrade our plant to get the nitrogen in order. Let me give you some stats. $630,000 is the amount of capacity fees the town of Trap charged Lakeside. Interest on $630,000 over 20 years is $208,560, which brings the grand total of Lakeside's contribution to $838,560,000, which is 7% of a $12 million wastewater treatment plant. This will go a long way towards upgrading our wastewater treatment plant. By demanding that Lakeside only be connected to ENR technology, the developer will have no recourse but to demand his money back from Trap so that he can pay for what you're asking him to do. Passing Resolution 327 will directly cost each Trap household $1,634.62. This is a lot of money for our individual town residents to shoulder, especially the ones who are already receiving assistance from the Neighborhood Service Center. Taking this money away is only counterproductive. This Resolution 327 is going to have a very direct $838,560 financial impact on Trap. And asking us to give it back to buffer 18 months of effluent for up to 120 homes that would be connected in small phases is unreasonable. You're penalizing Trap for not having the funding to pursue an ENR plant sooner.
That's Tom, Mr. Schmidt.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, councilman, appreciate that.
Bill, I understand that you're supposed to be reading a letter from our Lindsey Bryan, our lawyer, into the minutes this evening?
We don't read it out.
No, we're not going to be doing that. Nope. Okay, it'd be in the public record. Correct. It'd be in the public record for everybody to read. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read 328? That'd be great.
Resolution Number 328, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to revise Chapter Three Amendment Procedures.
Okay. Anybody want to come up to 328 and talk about 328? Okay.
I'll just highlight, Ryan Schewalter appearing as a citizen. Just to highlight for your awareness or your consideration, the amendment in 328 is essentially one sentence, which says that the procedures above do not apply to amendments initiated by the county. And I certainly understand the purpose and the intent of that as it relates to the quarterly increments, given the county flexibility to introduce additional amendments as and when they are deemed warranted, I think is beneficial to the county. I think you should have the flexibility to react where it's appropriate. But I think eliminating the provision that calls for coordination with municipalities is ill-advised. Having a municipal system that's owned and operated and run by town, whether it's TRAP or Easton, or St. Michael's is a good example, but Oxford, eliminating the role of the municipal corporation to review and provide recommendations on water and sewer plan amendments doesn't make sense to me. So, I would just make that comment. I certainly agree with changing the restriction on timing, but still think that the local government or the controlling authority for those systems should have a role in any proposed amendment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on 328? Okay, we'll go ahead and keep that open. Madam Secretary, could we read 329?
Resolution Number 329, a resolution to adopt a temporary moratorium on the processing of applications for large-scale solar energy systems beyond the special exception stage for a period of five months pending consideration and adoption of such legislation as the county council may consider advisable to promote public health, safety, and welfare.
Okay. Our last resolution, 329. Would anybody like to come up and speak on 329? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and keep that open. Okay. All right, let's move on to Bill Number 497. Go ahead and read that. Be great. Into the record.
Bill Number 1497, a bill to amend Chapter 24, Boards, Committees, and Commissions of the Talbot County Code in order to add a new Article V entitled Police Accountability Board and Administrative Charging Committee.
Is there anybody want to talk about the bill, 1497?
1497 would not fall within the purview of the Planning Commission, so...
But I don't understand.
I mean, as far as keeping the public hearing open on it, I mean, it's your call.
Oh, okay.
What I'm saying, if you wanted to use the same justification that you have on the previous bills, this one wouldn't meet that justification because it does not fall within their purview.
Right. We still couldn't vote tonight. We go with...
No, no, I'm not asking for the vote. I'm just saying, you can close the public hearing on this one because it doesn't fall within the same purview. That's all.
Okay. So, is anybody here want to speak on the bill? What's council's preference? Would we like to close it, or you want to keep it open for another week?
Do you want to just keep written comment open until Friday? Just in case anybody missed it?
Is that okay, council? Is anybody okay with that?
I'm fine with written comment.
Mr. Lesher, you okay with that? Keeping it open to Friday?
Well, we're closed on Friday.
I mean, closed on Friday.
We're closed for Good Friday.
We're closed on Good Friday.
So, then, I guess you could keep written comment open until close of business on Thursday?
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Just in case anybody missed it and they hear us talking about it tonight.
Okay.
And was the work session that we had with Sheriff Gamble and everybody else recorded so that people could go back and review that? Okay, so that is, you could go to our website if anybody wanted to review that work session. It was pretty... What's the word I want?
Informative.
Informative. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. So, I guess at this time, we'll keep the public hearing open, and we'll move on to the county manager report.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. The first items that I have are board and committee appointments. The first one is for the Board of Electrical Examiners requesting the reappointment of Tim Fluhardy to that board. Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to put Timmy Fluhardy on the electric board.
Reappointed.
Electrical board.
Board of Electrical Examiners.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
The next is Commission on Aging requesting the appointment of Grace Lyons, Community Relations Director for Candlelight Cove Assisted Living to the Commission on Aging.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
The next involves the Emergency Services Advisory Board requesting the reappointment of Debbie Thames from Shore Regional Health, Steve Morozak, Talbot County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association, and Scott Mergenthaler for the sheriff's office, recommending their reappointment to the board.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Counsel, I've asked your county engineer to come up. We have a request from the Department of Public Works to submit a grant application to the Maryland Energy Administration's Clean Fuels Incentive Program for the purchase of new pickup trucks and propane conversion kits. As you read in your agenda packet, Department of Public Works is seeking council approval to apply for and accept grant funding from the Maryland Energy Administration to purchase two to four new pickup trucks and propane conversion kits for the sanitary district. And Ray is here to add anything else or answer any questions related to this request.
And just to the councils, where we did do this about five years ago with two vehicles, we did convert those F-150 trucks that operate on gasoline to propane, so we are using propane.
I got you. That's great. That's great. So, is there a motion? Second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, well, there's motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
All right.
Good job, Ray.
Good job, Ray.
The next item I have is a request for a letter of support to Senator Carden and Senator Van Hollen for Building African American Minds Incorporated, BAM, application for congressionally-directed spending funds. As you read in your agenda packet, Building African American Minds is seeking council approval for a letter of support to Senator Carden and Senator Van Hollen for consideration of congressionally-directed spending for the construction of their academic center. No county funds are required.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
The next item I have for council's discussion and consideration, you have received a request from Queen Anne's County Commissioners requesting a letter of support for the William Preston Lane Jr. Memorial Bridge, Chesapeake Bay Bridge construction. As you read in your packet, Queen Anne's County is seeking council action on behalf or on a letter of support for the construction of the new Bay Bridge. You do have a copy of that letter in your packet, and I know you wanted to have that discussion this evening.
We sure did. So, Mr. DeVio, you want to start us off?
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you want to do... I'd be happy to make a motion and second discussion if you want.
You want to discuss?
Yeah, I'm willing to make a motion that we send the letter in support.
Go have a second.
I think we need to discuss what goes in the letter first.
Okay, go ahead.
Can we do that?
Ms. Price, go ahead.
Sure.
We have no second. Let's discuss it.
Okay. So, on this one, I know that for the last, you know, many years, of course, they started out with the study. I don't know, there was 12, 13, 15 or so spans proposed to go across from, all the way from southern Maryland all the way up to the north, and then they whittled it down to about three, which is the current location, and then one just south and one just north, which is the one that would come through Talbot County. We've already issued letters, obviously, that we are not in support of the one that comes through Bay 100 for reasons that we don't need to discuss again. And when we've met with M.DOT and State Highway, we've talked about the need for not just improving the span across the bay itself, but the whole corridor, which we started to allude to in our earlier discussion today, and that it, you know, it stops pretty much even before you get to Chesapeake College 213 and all of that, and then it starts to back up, you know, right there at 404. And we've talked about the need for an overpass or something at the left turn there, and of course, the rest of the corridor. For the most part, in reading through the various letters that the different eastern shore counties are sending, I think that we probably agree with the location. But the part that I would like us to discuss editing is it talks about a replacement bridge at the current crossing, a new eight-lane replacement bridge, meaning that the other two would be demolished and not used. Clearly, there's a lot of maintenance that goes on. I don't think it's our decision or any other county's decision on how, with what they replace it with, as long as it is adequate to get the traffic across, and they also include the corridor, you know, on down to the beach. I mean, obviously, it's not just the beach, it's commuter traffic 12 months a year. The beach traffic is not 12 months a year. I just think that it's the state's decision and responsibility. It's their money for what they build there. So, what I would ask in the edit to our letter is to just say, "An additional bridge at the current location and/or a replacement bridge, whatever the state sees fit." I don't think it's my decision to say, "You need to replace the bridge and tear down the other two." That's the edit that I would generally ask for in this letter, if we're going to send something.
Mr. Council President, would you like the secretary to read the current letter in its state? Would that be helpful?
It might be helpful.
But there's also five other letters that have their own twists and turns on that as well.
Understand. I mean, so we do have this proposed letter. It's not very long, but...
Yeah, go ahead and read.
It's addressed to Governor Hogan and Jim Ports, Secretary of Maryland Department of Transportation. Dear Governor Hogan and Secretary Ports, on behalf of the Talbot County Council, I'm writing to express the support of Talbot County for a replacement bridge at the current crossing of the William Preston Lane Jr. Memorial Bridge, Chesapeake Bay Bridge, shared between Anarundel and Queen Anne's Counties. As the main thoroughfare to and from the eastern shore to the western shore, the five lanes, three westbound and two eastbound of the current bridge are not adequate to effectively and efficiently manage the commuter traffic, which traverses the bridge due to lack of other viable routes. In addition, summer tourist traffic alone is forecast to reach 110,000 vehicles per day by 2030, a short eight years from now, resulting in miles-long backups and hours of delay. This is particularly troubling since the bridge provides vital access for emergency services, patient transport, fire response, as well as those traveling to medical care facilities, places of employment, and to see family and friends. Additionally, the county council is on record highlighting the importance of maintaining traffic flow not only across the Chesapeake Bay, but throughout the U.S. Route 50 corridor as a priority item. The county council respectfully requests that the NEPO Phase II evaluation for a replacement bridge with a minimum of eight lanes be included in the Maryland Department of Transportation's budget.
So, those are the two references I'm talking about. It's at the end of the letter, you know, replacement bridge with a minimum of eight lanes. I trust that they will do the proper studies to figure out what needs to go there, and I think that's also referenced in the first paragraph of replacement bridge, and I would just include, you know, or talk about additional lanes of traffic across the current location.
So, you would want to remove, so it would read, "Evaluation for a replacement bridge be included in the Maryland Department of Transportation's budget." Just take out with a minimum of eight lanes?
It wouldn't say replacement. It could be additional bridge or replacement bridge, whatever they deem appropriate.
So, the first sentence would be for an additional bridge?
Additional and/or replacement. I don't, again, I don't think it's our decision to say that you need to replace it. You know, it's up to them to adequately look at what the maintenance costs are and go from there.
Okay. Mr. Pat, you got any?
I can go either way. I can understand why Caroline, I mean, why Queen Anne and Anarundel are looking for an eight-lane bridge. If you think about the Delaware Memorial Bridge, I believe that's eight lanes for an east direction. It does allow for more accommodation for heavy traffic flows when you have that additional lane. So, I can see their point for wanting to go that way, but I can also understand Mrs. Price's point as far as, you know, are we the ones that should be telling the state what to put there? So, I mean, I can go with either way, that you and the council decide to move on this. Tell you the truth, an eight-lane bridge would certainly solve our problem for years to come, for years to come, but the cost of taking down the current structure and building a new one, probably is a pipe drain.
Yeah.
Probably is a pipe drain. So, that's what I stand on.
Mr. Lesher?
Yeah, I share the concerns that both Mr. Pat and Mrs. Price have articulated here regarding these impacts. We need to get the state's attention about those impacts and about how they are going to address those impacts in Talbot County. We've addressed, we've taken this concern to the state several times. We've gotten nothing more than lip service. There's no recognition of this. There's no plan to address these impacts. And if we send a letter of support now, where's our leverage? We need to wait on this. We need to press pause on this. I'm certainly not ready to do this tonight, and we did get a request just late before the meeting that we defer action and perhaps take a little bit of public comment on this issue that will impact Talbot County residents. Let's hold off on this. Consider perhaps other wording on this letter, or perhaps reconsider whether we should be sending a letter of support on this matter at all until we get a better response from the state.
I completely agree with some of those points, Mr. Lesher. We do need to address the traffic flow concerns through Talbot County as we've been addressing all night tonight. We can't get them to reduce the speed on a road when somebody gets run over and killed, you know? So, I have concerns about the Tillman Island Bridge and folks on Tillman. When the bridge gets stuck up there, trying to get emergency services off, onto the island or get the people off the island. And when I look at Ken Island in the summertime, coming to a standstill, that's a huge safety concern, especially when you have rural hospitals that are shifting care to different facilities. We have to be able to have the transportation across the state in order to provide those services, and we need to get a new bridge. That's very apparent to me. I would love nothing more than to fill this thing with teeth and demand that they do it and they do the study that they told us that they would do once they chose the channel. Anything that we can do to improve or twist their arm, we can't, if we don't send a letter, that doesn't mean diddly to the state. They don't care. They know that we need the bridge and we want the bridge. It's a state initiative for safe traffic across the bay. Man, Mr. Lesher, I'm open to ears. I'm willing to do anything we can to force their hand to improve traffic flow through Talbot County, but we're the problem because we're not even discussing with a local municipality that has the Route 50, that's making changes and causing, that's going to make further delays with crosswalks and additional lights. So, I, I see those as two different things, and I realized that after I had an angry, very first-year meeting down at Mako with the Transportation, saying, "Yes, we know we need a bridge, but you've got to look all the way through." And they said, "Yeah, but we can't do that. We, we can't do a study for traffic flow all the way from DC to the beach until we know which corridor we're going to go. And maybe it's going to come from Baltimore, maybe it's going to come south." So, it's two, two different issues to me. Get the bridge done and do the study as quickly as you possibly can to maintain flow from the city to the beach.
So one thing that's important to get out there is the funding for this NEPA II study. So, I think we need to send something. Maybe we beef up the section and really, really talk again about the corridor and all of that in the written thing, but if they don't fund this NEPA II study, then this thing kind of dies for a while. So, and, and there's not very much on here. It's just one sentence about respectfully request that NEPA Phase II evaluation is included in the Maryland Department of Transportation's budget. I mean, that's, that's important that they include that NEPA II study, and I know that Jack Wilson from Queen Anne's, he's, he's been saying that at every opportunity. So it's important that we, we get some of these components out in a letter, but maybe we, we beef up...
And it doesn't make sense that Talbot County, when we're looking at letters from Wycomico County, Caroline County, Somerset County, and you think they're not going to pay attention that Talbot doesn't send, they don't, they're not going to care if Talbot doesn't come or it's late, but if Talbot comes with these, and we're addressing the same concerns that we're sending over with the Transportation discussion that we had earlier tonight, it, everything dovetails together and explains what our, our concerns are. Delaying does absolutely nothing to strengthen our fight for what we want. They know what we need and what we want, and we have to stay on them about that.
So can we ask for the letter to be edited a little bit, beefed up on the corridor section? Do additional, you know, we want to make sure it's at the current crossing, right? We want to emphasize that, we've said that, that's consistent with the position that we've been taking, that it's, you know, additional or replacement, whatever the state sees fit, beefing up the section on, you know, how important it is to include the NEPA II study in their, in their budget. So I guess those are the three things that could be beefed up.
And I would add in to, to reference the Talbot County Project Priority Listing for Consolidated Transportation Program, so that they have the document to go back and revisit, and we could say how many times we've sent these same things through. Please revisit the Consolidated Transportation Program that's been submitted to you 14 years in a row, with these same concerns.
That's, that's a great idea.
Right. And the thing is, if they get, there is traffic that has taken off 50 and flows over to 404 since they've done those improvements on 404, but with a, with a left-hand turn onto 404, more people are probably going to stay on Route 50. If they had a better, you know, if they had the, you know, the overpass there at 404, it, it might take some, some of the traffic, you know, off of 50. That could help if they were to do something there, and I know that's not technically in our county, but it leads right into our county. So, you know, I mean, I think it's just some things that we can, we can put in here to address the corridor and the flow.
Can you read that back to us?
Yeah.
Got all that right now?
Yeah. So, Mr. Thomas, can you, can you work on that sometime in the next couple of days and get back to council with that? That'd be great.
So we can...
Yes, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Again, I'll make a motion that we send a letter addressing those concerns that we, we would like added to this letter.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, and then we'll approve it at the next meeting.
Well, let's, we've got a motion, a second, to send a letter, after it, after it's been proofread and thereby seized. Can, can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Can I have the motion read back to me, please?
I make a motion that we send the letter in support, once the council has had the opportunity to review the changes we've requested tonight.
No.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Okay, thank you, counsel. The next item that I have is I ask our Director of Corrections, Mr. Terry Kukolos, to come up. We have a request from the Department of Corrections to award bid number 2202 Integrated Video Recording Security Management System, Talbot County Department of Corrections, Talbot County, Maryland. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Corrections is seeking council approval to award bid number 2202 Integrated Video Recording Security Management System to ARC, A-R-K, in the amount of $330,736, as well as approval to allow staff, to provide staff the approval to negotiate best and final offer with ARC, to break the project into a two-physical-year project, FY '22 and FY '23, out of necessity. Terry is here to answer any further questions on this.
Terry.
Hey, welcome, Terry. How you doing?
I'm great.
Good, good, good.
I, I hear, I listened to the conversation about the Bay Bridge and Kent and Arrows, and I realized why I moved to Easton.
Yeah, so...
So Director Kukolos, this, this project would upgrade the entire video system in, system-wide at the detention center? Is that what we're looking to do?
It not only upgrades what exists, but it also puts cameras where they've never been before, including external to the facility, the roof of the facility, and it really improves the overall security of the housing units, the common areas, and the outside security areas. And really, it, it is a project to decrease the vicarious liability that we have. Cameras in jails are almost essential. The system that we have was placed by two of our staff. They did a fine job, but the entire system is really malfunction. It does not record, and with every major scenario and incident that may end up in court, we take a video of it and we store it for future needs and use. The new system will be a digital system. It also incorporates Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi is essential, because there is no Wi-Fi in the jail, but it'll permit us to use a great deal of technology that improves the overall outlook of the inmates. It provides tablets for education programs, substance abuse programs, and numerous other programs. We can also extend it to have video visitation, and a number of other things that have minimal cost to the county, but we can accomplish it without Wi-Fi, and, yes.
Just a second question that came, came to mind. Most law enforcement officers in the state of Maryland now have, are wearing body, body worn cameras, and there's a, a storage requirement of how long that material has to be held.
Yes.
Are we under the same requirement at, at our correction facilities as far as holding on to video material?
No. Presently, we hold for 30 days. With the new system, we'll hold for 45 days. And if we have a major scenario, we'll, we'll burn a disc and we'll have it for...
For state attorney?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm glad, Ms. Callahan.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Yep.
I, I make a motion that we approve the, the bid for ARC.
Okay, you've got a, a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And Terry's here for a couple more items. He has a request, he's requesting to extend the current agreement with WellPath, formerly known as Correct Care Solutions LLC, to provide inmate medical and mental health services. Again, in your packet, he's asking that you renew the contract for FY '23 at a cost of $467,128.15, which has been placed in the proposed FY '23 budget. Due to timing, we need to move on this request at this time. Terry, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, it is a contractual, it's a contractual increase, and this is the last year of the WellPath contract, or we will go out and RFP for the next, the next contract. And the food services contract is the last one. It is also a contractual increase embedded in the contract, and that concludes the presentation.
Well, let me just jump on that, because you're trying, you're rolling both of them, which council may want to do that. So the second request for food services, he's, he's asking that you consider awarding to, who is this?
Trinity.
Trinity Services Group in the amount of $248,800. And again, that's been budgeted FY '23 budget as proposed, if you'd like to do both of those.
What's the current number of incarcerated individuals?
It fluctuates in the 50s. The count is creeping up as the courts are opening up, and we're getting more individuals that are sentenced rather than pretrial. So if you look at the entire population of anybody under our supervision, it's in the range of 90-plus. If you look at those that are just incarcerated, it's in the mid-50s.
Okay.
Between 52 and 57.
I'm impressed that you're spending half a million dollars for mental health in there. That's, you know, when we look at school budget, and what they're spending for a small, a much larger population of children, and you, and clearly, yours are in serious need of, of the assistance, so thank you, and I imagine that does a lot for the, when they get back out on the street and continue their life, so...
We, we take it, we take it with, with great diligence, because everybody hears about the justice reinvestment program, and the reformation of pretrial services, and all the great legislative changes that come out of Annapolis that affect corrections. And what it's done is it's really taken out of jail anybody who can get out of jail, and left in jail those that can't. And those that can't get out of jail are those with the greatest gravity of problems, the mental health, the medications that we have. And I was speaking with, with Mr. Pack earlier, if we can control anger management of the, of that group, then that is the biggest challenge that we have, the co-occurring disorders being one, the mental health being the other, and the anger, you put those three things together, and it really creates a scenario of failure for so many people. We're trying to impact it as best that we can. We have a chronic care list, so that we take those with the greatest need, and those are the individuals we channel in our mental health services. Those that require medication and medication continuation, we channel into our psychiatrists, and we do telepsychiatry, and we're able to resolve individuals as, as well as we can. And the fortunate thing is, is that they're adult offenders rather than the children that are in our schools. So it's, it is an everyday work of devotion for that segment of the population, most being Talbot County residents. So it pays us to do our, our best practice diligence. So thank you for noticing that.
Yeah.
So do we want to take these two together, since we've discussed them both? Is that okay?
Counsel doesn't mind. Again, it's WellPath for $467,128.15, and Trinity $248,800.
I'll make that motion for both of them.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And so while Terry's here, we may want to...
Oh, yes, I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Terry, I, I want to take the time to just congratulate you on your reappointment to the Commission on Correctional Standards. That's, that's a big plus for Talbot County to have you on that commission. Of course, that commission oversees all the standards from all the 24 jurisdictions here in the state of Maryland, so congratulations on your reappointment to the Commission on Correctional Standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Is it okay, before you run away, I would have, while you're still sitting here, because you might not be here for council comments, one of the bills that we tried to get through Annapolis was the correctional officers, like the LEOPS, and it, you know, went through the House, no problem, no at all. And, yeah, okay, and, you know, when it crossed over to the opposite house, there was a little, it got stuck, it got stuck in rules, and we thought we were going to get it out, but unfortunately, at the, you know, end of session, everything gets crazy, and not everything can get moving. So it was going really, really well, and then got, got stuck in the last few days, so unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that study this year. Not enough communication, I think, over there, but there's support for it, and we'll have to try, try it again next year, but it was going really well. I don't think we'll have a problem next year, we just have to get the timing better. So apologize that we weren't able to take that one across the finish line.
Well, I appreciate it. Senator Eckert contacted me today and said it's going to be a prefiled bill next year, and I'm not sure how the House version ended up in House Judiciary, when it's a pension-related financial fiscal bill. So the judiciary never found the time to give it more than a cursory hearing, and next time, we'll be a little bit more vigilant.
Yeah, I mean, we're fine. I mean, Senator Eckert asked me to testify with her, and we sat side by side, and, you know, it was no problem, and then, like I said, when they're not cross-fired from the get-go, it's an extra little hurdle to go across, you know, because then you do have, when you get to the end of session, it ends up, it ends up in rules, rather than having the true cross-file, which they can be moving concurrently at the same time, so...
Guess a little bit, at least Sunny Day was a sunny day yesterday, but...
It was beautiful. It was beautiful there, for sure.
It was a beautiful day. But hopefully, next year, we'll go into it, appreciate the council's support, because it really starts here at home with that support to be able to get the legislation, and then to be able to let the correctional staff know that their consideration is preeminent in the vision of the council, and we appreciate the, the good work.
Right, I think they know how we feel, we just wish we could have done it a year sooner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the support.
So, the last thing I would say while Terry's here is just to congratulate, I know you got one more thing to congratulate you on. So, yeah, as you know, there are many laws that dictate, rules and regulations dictate everything that goes on at that correctional facility, and we are fortunate to have the gentleman we have running the correctional facility here. But over the past, I guess, month, you went through a pretty rigorous audit, and you passed with flying colors.
100 percent, no recommendations.
And that's, so that's, that's a reflection of not only the director, but the team that runs that facility down there.
Absolutely. Congratulations on that.
We worked hard, it's 100...
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We worked hard, and my staff is happy, too. First week of May is National Correctional Employees Week, so we'll come back with our Employee of the Year, and we'll also come back requesting a proclamation for the week.
Thank you, Terry.
We'll be here.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry. Thank you, counsel. I have just a couple more things. The next one is I'm requesting council declare Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, a special legislative day to allow for the introduction of the FY '23 budget.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And under announcements...
Hang on, what? Mr. Smith, sorry. Just want to let people know that I will not be able to be in attendance. I already had things scheduled with my Mako duties, so, you know, I guess I can leave that I'm introducing the budget or whatever, but I just won't be able to be there for the presentation and, you know, any commentary for, on that date.
Okay, thank you. Under announcements, county offices will be closed on Friday, April 15th, in recognition of Good Friday. And then finally, I just want to mention that April 10th through 16th this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. That recognizes the people that remain calm when everybody else isn't. And that is when you dial 911, and you're having a crisis, and they remain calm, and they make sure they get the right resources and the right amount of time to you. And they're often unsung heroes, but the truth be known that none, none of the emergency response system would work without them. There would be no fire trucks, no ambulances or police cars if it doesn't get through incredibly professional and dedicated 911 operators that we have here at Talbot Center. So, again, just want to recognize them for the work that they do, and if you get a chance to give them a holler, stop by, whatever, they would love to see you. And to the public, you know, give them a shout-out on Facebook, they're, they're having their pictures up, and people are giving them kudos, but we have a good crew down there. And with that, that completes the county manager report for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Counsel, President, members of the council.
Okay. Thank you. Good, good report, good job. Okay, next up would be public comment. Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up.
All right, you can go.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, Ron.
I would like to address a few comments that have been made by this council in recent months.
Yes.
And so, let me kind of reword a few things here. Ms. Price, you've, you've said...
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, could you, could you not reference to a council person's name, please?
Sure, okay.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Yep.
Okay. Right on.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So let me, there have been some comments from this council about how TRAP is running our town, running our wastewater treatment plant. And there've been, without quoting directly, they're simply false. Comments of our wastewater treatment plan is a failing plan. It's just a, it's just lazy language. It's, it's really kind of upsetting. I think it's, our operator is doing what he can. I think Mr. Ryan had put into, into the minutes earlier this year, earlier this evening, that TRAP has a great record. I believe we have three violations in the last eight years. I just find it upsetting that members of this council continue to sort of run down TRAP, run down what we're doing, and I'm not quite sure why. I know there's a contingency of public out here in Talbot County that are moving under, moving forward under some falsehoods, are bringing up statistics that, that they're bending to their own desire, if you will. I think, yeah, that's really, I just hope that when these members say things and public comment, especially in this forum, that in the future, they have their facts correct, that they do their own due diligence to research what they are saying. Because when things in this forum are put out for the public and in the minutes, it's taken as the truth. And, you know, without-
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry, let me, two sentences, please. You know, without coming back with a folder full of stats, you know, it's, and going through line item by line item, you know, we're, we're not kind of in that mood. But I just hope that these members will, will just, in the future, do their due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else with public comment? I see you looking over there. Nope, nothing. Okay, you've been very patient, very quiet in there. Okay, then, let's, let's move on to council comments. Mr. Pack?
I really don't have anything else really to say other than, you know, with Terry and, and his great staff, Director Gukolos and his staff down at the detention center. Although I will not be here in this chair next, next term or next year, you certainly have my support in pushing forward that, that bill, and anything that I can do for you and for the next council. I'll certainly lend my voice to do that. It has been a pleasure to serve Talbot County over these last 15 years, and reaching the decision I've reached in the last several months to not run again was a very personal decision. It was one that did not come easily to me because of the affection that I have for the people that I've worked with over the 15 years. The department heads, the staff, county managers that we've had over the last 15 years, the various county council members that I've had the pleasure to work with. We may not always agreed, certainly we may not always agreed, but I believe that at the core, each member had the county as a whole as their best interest. And I certainly had done my best to make sure Talbot County was a little bit better than I left it, than I found it, I should say, 15 years ago. And I think we have, I think we've accomplished a great deal over, over that time period. When I go back and look at all the accomplishments that this council and past councils have reached, you know, this council elected the first African-American apartment here in Ms. Joy Nego. This council elected the first Hispanic apartment here in Miguel Salinas. This council put the deputies in the LEOP system for their retirement. So this council has, in just the short four years, has done a lot to move Talbot County forward. And as Ms. Price alluded to, getting the correctional officers in the cores system before I leave this seat was probably one of my greatest failures. I will have to admit that to you, because I think your officers certainly deserve it. They certainly deserve it. So I just want to say to you this evening that you have my support. Even though I may not be sitting here, I won't be sitting here, you still have my support moving forward to get that done. So it's been great to serve, you know, but I've reached the decision not to run again. It's been a pleasure to serve Talbot County over the last 14, 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. Lesher?
Nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I want you to enjoy yourself, too, now, on vacation. Ms. Price?
Absolutely. So yesterday marked the 90th day of the legislature, and happy Sunny Die, thank goodness. And there are lots of updates to give, but I want to highlight just two this evening. The first is the EMS Emergency Medical Transport Bill. We were able to get that through with some amendments. Super excited about that. And what that means is that, you know, currently, we only get reimbursed $100, and only if our ambulances transport to an emergency room hospital. And what this bill now does is that we would get reimbursed regardless of where we transport, to an urgent care center, or if we just treat in the field, you know, someone, we're able to resuscitate somebody, and they don't need further transport, or they don't need to go to a hospital, which recognizes the true health professionals that they are, and the medical background that they have. And then there'll be an increment of going up above the $100. There is a three-year sunset, but typically, they just want to see how it's working, so I don't expect that it's something that will go away in three years. Sometimes the sunset things do. But I, this was, this was huge. And, you know, our, our emergency services department, and I know that Clay has quite an affinity for that, this, this is just going to make such a difference. And it'll also allow us, through Medicaid, for them to recognize the transport or non-transport to other, other places, which means that for those who have insurance, we'll have the ability to build the insurance for those ambulance rides. We also will be able to be proactive and go out to people who we know, or we call them lovingly our frequent flyers, and be proactive and go out and see them and be reimbursed for that, be reimbursed for that as well. My screen just went off. And the other one that's really, really close to home is something that the county went through since 2006. And this has a really funky title that, you know, seemingly innocuous, HP 1448, concurrent civil jurisdiction. And what does that mean? This, this bill basically, I'll just give you just a brief history, because it'll make more sense as soon as I click on this. So in 2006, we had, we had a citizen who was told, an unapproved property, who was told not to clear trees and build a driveway, and it was in violation, and he did it anyway. And MDE discovered that violation, and they alerted the county. Three years later, we issued abatement orders for the, cutting the trees down outside the critical area, and directed the owner to remove the driveway and restore the property. We said that there's, you know, there's civil penalties of up to $1,000 a day in violation until they were abated. They were fully abated in 2015, but those fines then totaled over $700,000. So then the owner went through a series of appeals, through our Board of Appeals and different court systems. You know, and just even a few years ago, the Circuit Court determined that the, that the owner was liable for the full amount of those fines. And then last, 2020, this Court of Special Appeals agreed. And in 2021, all of a sudden, we found out that we didn't have the right to enforce civil penalties at the local level after, let's see, 15 years? And it didn't just affect Talbot County. And I remember when Patrick read that decision to us by the judge, and we all about, I think our jaws all dropped to the, to the floor, and we got, he said, we had to be kidding, because $700,000 in fines, $200,000 in attorneys, and court costs later, we got nothing. We got nothing. We fought this. And the first thing I thought of was, okay, this can't just be Talbot County. I mean, how do you give us the ability to do, have zoning laws with, with no teeth? I mean, the only way people are going to pay attention is if you find them. Otherwise, they're, you're just going to slap them on the hand, and, and we're just going to have people violating our zoning laws left and right. So we immediately took this to Merrill Association of Counties, and they immediately recognized the importance of this. And if not for the Talbot County case, being the poster child, most time I don't like being the poster child at the state level, but in this case, everybody saw this, and it, and it affects not every single jurisdiction, but it really was going to affect Baltimore City, who was the lead sponsor on this bill. And I apologize for going on about this, but this is huge for something that we recognized here was a problem, and take it to the state organization, and they, I got to tell you, Mako worked like crazy, the amount of legwork that it took to get, to get this bill through, to, to make sure they understood this had nothing to do with criminal proceedings, and that we, we didn't need to go through the Circuit Court system, that we were already doing this. And so it, I want to tell you that it, we first went through the House, and we testified there, and it ended up passing the House unanimously, 135 to zero. And then it, you know, as things started, I was explaining with the cores, things get a little held up. And literally yesterday morning, so I got an email from one of our policy team at Mako on Sunday, and said, I need you to reach out to three or four senators, you know, and we were dividing and conquering, reaching out to the senators, because what was yesterday was a voting session. There was no hearing in the Senate. It was just a voting session. And with all the thousands of bills that they're dealing with, like, they don't know what this is, and we need this to clear the Senate as well. So we, we contacted all of our senators, we showed up, and along with Baltimore City, and we were sitting there just in case we needed to answer questions. You know, before the committee meeting, voting session started, we talked to the senators again to follow up on our emails. It flew through there with no opposition. They did three readings in one day, and it passed unanimously through the Senate last night. This is, this is huge for Talbot County, and a situation that happened here to have this big of a statewide impact is going to be probably one of the proudest things, you know, that I was a part of, especially in this session. And to be able to do that as president of Mako and get this through, because otherwise, people wouldn't know. And I don't want other jurisdictions to go through nearly a million-dollar issue like that we went through. So I wanted to share that news. Super happy about that. And I need to give a huge shout-out to, to Patrick, because, you know, he kept, he sent us like, you need to write my testimony. And he sent me this lawyer-induced language of like, no, 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 no. I said, please pretend you haven't gone to law school, and these are delegates and senators you're speaking to. I mean, you need to give the Reader's Digest version. And I think three versions later, you sent me exactly what it needed to be. You were on the phone with this yesterday before we went in with, you know, with the team, and just giving the history of it so that we could tell the senators. And I just want to thank you so much. It's not for you, you know, that the knowledge that you passed along for this issue. So I'm eternally grateful for that. And this is something that, like I said, little old Talbot County having a huge statewide impact for, to, for the benefit of everybody else, it's not going to help us with our case, but it will prevent that from happening to somebody else. So I thank you for your indulgence in that, but it was, that was a big deal. So thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
So I would just like to say thank you to Brian Smith from coming from the town of TRAP. You have been vilified so many times. And I hate, there's the one environmentalist from Queen Anne's County that all over Facebook will say, how's this little town going to be able to employ somebody who's going to be able to manage a wastewater treatment facility? Well, they already do. You know, there's so many people that just love to strike up fear and use falsehoods, and everything that you said tonight, twisting facts, falsehoods, not being out there. God, it's almost like they don't have any integrity. I don't get it. But on a side note, I would like to say Talbot County does employ some amazing individuals. Many of them have second, third jobs. Many of them give back to the community. One tonight that I'd like to recognize, Greg Harris, who's sometimes in here. His wife has a golf tournament coming up. It's June 18th. It's a scramble at Queenstown, and it's for the Virtuous Women Project, which does a scholarship. And that's how I first met her at Easton High School, the scholarship night. She was delivering, they were delivering the scholarship together that they'd raised the money for. So if you can, and you're interested in golf, let me know. It's Saturday, June 18th. I'd be happy to forward that information around to anybody. But I love to, to support the individuals who work in Talbot County and support us. So thank you to Greg and to Kim for putting that on. Thank you.
Okay, so let's wrap it up. Mr., I don't have anything tonight. I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday this weekend. Easter's coming, and that's a big deal. So I want to wish everybody a safe holiday. And Mr. Lesher, you want to, you want to close this out, or you, would you like me to do it?
I'm happy to do it if you want me to.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. That would be great. That would be great.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 19th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening in open session at 4:30 PM, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statements for closing that meeting. Therefore, it's your motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene to ask to other.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher, for hanging out with us tonight.